It was a fabulous event.
Was it? We'll have a report. You can give us a report at the Commissioner updates. So, good morning, everyone. I call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for July 29th. And please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, happy Monday of the fair week. It's exciting for us, hopefully all of you. Looks like we're going to have good weather for that, so that's nice. First item of business is citizen input. If there's anyone here that wants to talk about anything that's not on the agenda, this will be the time to do it. Looks like everyone here is here for an agenda item. So, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any questions, changes, comments?
No proposed changes. I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further comments? Okay, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you. So, our first action item we're going to convene is the governing body of Sun River Service District. Do we have to adjourn as convening? Okay. And for consideration, two appointments and a signature letter. So, I think we can maybe do all those at once. The first is a signature letter appointing Ron Stevens to the Sun River Service District Managing Board. Second is a letter appointing Bill Hepburn to the Sun River Service District Managing Board. And the third is a letter thanking Greg Keller for service on the Sun River Service District Managing Board. Any comments or seek a motion just approving that, those actions?
I move we approve the board signature letter appointing Ron Stevens and reappointing Bill Hepburn to the Sun River District Managing Board. And then I approve the thank you letter to Greg Keller for his service on the Sun River Service Managing Board.
And I'll second it.
Okay. So, just real quickly, this is our role as the governing body of the Sun River Service District. And this is, these appointments are to the managing board, which actually does all of the budget making and oversight of the Sun River Service District.
The police and the fire.
Police and fire, yeah, in Sun River. So, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. So, next, so we'll move on to the, we'll reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County. And we'll consider board signature document number 2019-561, the Steric Cycle Environmental Solutions Amendment. I think Dave's going to tell us about that.
Yes, Commissioners, I'm going to fill in for Tim and Chad, both of whom are out this week, I believe. In any event, you may recall back in 2017, the Commissioners issued a notice of intent after an RFP process to operate the county's household hazardous waste management program. And what you have before you is a one-year extension to that contract, which was part of the RFP identified in that, that there would be two one-year extensions, or at least an option for that anyway, as well as in the original contract. And Tim is recommending that the board proceed with this. Includes a 3% fee increase in the total annual value being $205,000.
And is that the only change, then?
That's the only change, yes. The scope of services is identical to the original contract.
And how long, what's the duration?
It's a one-year term. So, there'd be one additional extension allowed for. And then after that, we'd be looking at another RFP.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment. This is good for citizens to understand that at the solid waste facility, when in doubt, we do have opportunities for disposal for flammable liquids and aerosols, compressed gases, corrosive liquids, fluorescent tubes, batteries, lithium and nickel cadmium batteries. So, this is the other kind of path of solid waste instead of putting them in the landfill. So, bring them to not landfill and we'll be able to take care of them.
Right. Yep. It's a good summary. Any comments or?
No. It's a building, when you are at the landfill, it's its own separate building. So, when I was there, I was very disappointed I didn't have some of my problems and dropped them off. It's really nice to know.
Nice to have, yeah. It's good. Okay. I'll seek a motion in support of this.
So, with that, I'll move board signature document number 2019-561, Steric Cycle Environmental Solutions, one-year amendment.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, the next item on our agenda, we're way ahead of schedule. Look at that. We're six minutes in. We're going to have a presentation from the Council on Aging of Central Oregon. And I think we've got a packet. So, if you'll join us up here at the tables, you can all come up. If you introduce yourselves, thanks for joining us today. We've, I think we requested this because we've, we get requests for grants and different things. And to, you know, we haven't had a presentation from your organization really to know all the details of what you do. So, we're looking forward to that. So, thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners and County Administration. I'm Sarah Peterson, and I'm a Management Analyst with Public Health. And in that role, I perform grant administration. And I've had the privilege of working in partnership with Judith Yur to administer the Service Partner Grant Program since around 2007. And in that role, I meet with providers to develop work plans, budgets, monitor performance, recommend payments. And I also coordinate the annual results of investment summary that is shared with you during your annual grant allocation process. So, the reason I'm here this morning with the team from the Council on Aging of Central Oregon is because Judith Yur asked me to coordinate this meeting. So, I am going to turn it over to the Council on Aging team and let them introduce themselves and take it over.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks.
Good morning, County Commissioners and County Administrators. My name is Susan Rotella, and I am the Executive Director of the Council on Aging. I've been with the council as its Executive Director for two and a half years. Excuse me. Prior to that, I was on the Board of Directors for three years, and I was the Board President for two years. Then, when our Executive Director resigned, I said, okay, now's my chance to implement all those ideas I had. So, we are very happy to be here this morning, and thank you for this opportunity. Joining me this morning is Dr. Annabelle Pelham. Dr. Pelham is the Chair of the Council on Aging's Board of Directors. We are thrilled to have her on our board. She is not only a retired professor of gerontology at San Francisco State University, she is the President of the National Association of Professional Gerontologists. And she also is the current Executive Director of an organization nonprofit called CAFE, which is the Center for Age Friendly Excellence. And we are so incredibly thankful to have her helping to guide our organization.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, I've been told to hit the second button. I'm going to go see if I can do that. Okay, blank screen off. How did I do? Okay, good. All righty. So, how many of you are familiar with the Council on Aging? How many familiar with it? And how many have ever used or know anyone who have used our services, the Council on Aging? Okay, good. I bet there's a few more of you, once we get through what it is that we do.
I know we're doing a grant application for the Sun River, the Lepine Fire, grant application for senior citizens. I did say your name on that.
Oh, yes, yes.
Who are the implement, you're going to implement.
Yes, we are, we are working with them to try to reduce the fire area around some of our older adults neighborhoods where they, their homes where they can't afford to actually implement it. So, thank you. Yes, that is, that's true. So, this morning, I'm going to speak, I'm going to try to spend about 15, 20 minutes on the presentation and leave about 10 minutes for questions. And the first few things, I'm going to try to speed through a little bit quickly because some of it you might know, but I really want to get to talking about investing for the future. Talk a little bit about the changing demographics here in Deschutes County. I know much of it you're aware of, but I'm going to focus more on the aging demographic changes. Then, a little background on the Council on Aging of Central Oregon. We used to be known as Central Oregon Council on Aging. Big switch, big name change to the Council on Aging of Central Oregon. So, we are no longer COCO, if any of you had ever heard that name before. Next, we're going to-
What are you now? Kate?
Coaco. We try not to use initials. We try to just say the Council on Aging. And part of the problem was, when you said COCO, it really did not communicate anything about aging or what we did. So, the Council on Aging, at least the word moved further up in the name.
Yeah.
The next thing I'd like to talk about is how the Council on Aging is building and investing for the future and for the tremendous growth in our aging population here in Deschutes County, as well as all of Central Oregon, Oregon and the state, the entire United States. It's, it's, it's not an issue that is just happening, the growth in aging just in, in Deschutes County. Next, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Service Partner Grant and our previous requests and incredible gratefulness that we feel for the monies that you've been able to allocate to us for Meals on Wheels and to congregate lunches for our older adults. They've been tremendous assistance to us, and I hope to say that many times before the end of the presentation. And then, I've been asked to speak to the discretionary grant application that we put in for this, this last quarter. And then, hopefully, some questions and answers. Okay, changing demographics. So, in this colorful slide, what I'm trying to communicate is that the aging population in Deschutes County, and this is both on the left side, this is from the census reports from 2000 and 2010. Of course, we're coming up on the 2020. But on the right is the forecast of our growing population by age segmentation. And this is a 2018 research report by the Population Research Center at PSU. So, as you can see, the, or hopefully you can, the green is the growth of the older adult population as a percentage of our total population. Our population, as you can see on the bottom, our total population, growing and doubling between 2000 and about 2025. Well, with that doubling, we not only see doubling of our older adult population, but the older adult population is growing as a percentage of our total population. So, we are actually, older adults are replacing younger people, people under 15. We will be almost twice as many older adults as children under 15 by the year 2040. So, that obviously has significant ramifications for our economy and for our medical services and for our community. So, as I said on the last slide, the 60-plus population is what the Council on Aging is responsible for under the Older Americans Act, which is how we are funded, primarily funded. Our constituents are 60-plus. And by the year 2040, 30% of our entire population in Deschutes County will be 60-plus. As we all know, older adults are flocking to Central Oregon and certainly flocking to Deschutes County. We're seeing tremendous shifts. Certainly, a lot of in-migration from major metropolitan areas around us are moving into Bend. But what we're really seeing is a lot of our older adults from Bend are being forced out of Bend. Either they can't afford to live here anymore, they can't afford, if they're renting, or can't afford the maintenance on their houses. And so, we're seeing a lot of out-migration from Bend into Redmond, Lepine. And even out of Lepine, we have several of our clients that are moving to Christmas Valley, just searching for places that they can afford to live. So, while we have a lot of affluent people moving into Bend, we still have a lot of people living in Bend that are from old mill workers and have been living here a long time and are struggling, are struggling to live independently here. We are all living longer. That's the good news. The bad news is, we're not all living very healthfully. We all think of everyone here in Bend and Central Oregon as driving around on their bicycles and skiing, et cetera. But it's interesting, I had one of my clients say, I just moved here six months ago. I thought, you know, I'm 70 years of age, I'm going to be skiing, I'm going to be bike riding. I got here, and within six months, I'm having a heart attack, and now I'm on Meals on Wheels. It's like this, this was not the, this was not the path I thought. People are living longer, but with many more chronic illnesses. So, that has a huge implication for both caregiving and also for the medical. And you may know that it's very hard to get a new Medicare physician here, one that will accept Medicare in Bend and Central Oregon, because they're basically at their, at their max. So, new people moving in here are having a hard time finding a primary physician. We're also becoming much more diverse. We work very closely with the Latino Community Association. We also work with the tribes out at Warm Springs. And we are working to try to make our services more culturally sensitive to the needs, the needs of Meals on Wheels for a Latino cultured person and a person who has been living here in the Midwest, eating meat and potatoes for their entire life is very different. And we're looking for ways that we can change our, and accommodate our meals for those changes. And poverty rates are increasing. And women are more likely to live in poverty than men, because women usually outlast men if they're married. And they spend a lot of money on, on helping their, their husband or partner before they die. I always am amazed at this number, that 10,000 baby boomers, of which I am one, are turning 65 each day and will be until the year 2030. 50% of baby boomers do not have children and/or are not in a relationship. And that has huge ramifications for who is going to take care of, of these folks. We think, oh, older people, they have Medicare, they have Social Security, and they have their families to take care of them. Well, that might have been true for earlier generations who had pensions. We died earlier, but now we're living longer, living less healthfully, and we don't have a spouse or children to take care of us. And if we do have children, they probably don't live anywhere close to where we live. So, that's a huge issue for how we're going to take care of our older adult population. Lack of retirement savings, this is all the, all the happy news, I know. Lack of retirement savings for a lot of our older adults. We were the product of the 401K generation. And for a lot of people who are not financially savvy, weren't forced into savings, they don't have a lot of savings. If they have a home, they're lucky, they have a home and hopefully equity in that. But the savings rate of baby boomers is, is fairly low. No, and of course, many of us do not have and did not have any opportunity to be in pension funds. So, this is going to be a challenge.
You know, I get, again, a little bit of a feel of a kind of an ideological bent with what you're saying and some of this. So, we're also, I'm a baby boomer also, I'm not quite to the 65, but we're also the most, we've borrowed more money than any other generation. We're the, that's why our federal debt is 22 trillion, that's why our state goes way, you know, our pensions, our purse is in debt, that's why so many people don't have money. It was the, it was the, you know, widespread borrowing of our generation. And it's, it's, it's not just that people couldn't save, that they weren't brought up to save, and they didn't save, and, and people live, we've all lived beyond our means for some reason in our generation. So, it's, to me, it's not just there was an opportunity to save, there was people just have chose now versus the future. And most people in our generation, I don't think, grew up realizing how long 60 to 80 is and how much money it takes to live that and how, and because there was just so much encouragement to spend, spend, spend. And so, people have gotten there on our, we've gotten there on our own. And it's, and, and so, it's not just government did it to us, or society did it to it, people did it to ourselves. And I, I, it's a huge issue, what you're talking about, the lack of retirement savings that most people in our generation are not, are just coming to terms with. And, and if you've had older relatives, you realize even what 90 looks like, which I've had. And so, it's a very long time from 60-something to 90-something or whatever. And that's, so it's not just there weren't pensions available, there was plenty of things that people could do to save, but people weren't taught to save. And so-
I totally agree. I'm sorry, I didn't mean it to-
It sounds like there's all these bad reasons. We've been the richest society since we've been kids. And yet, we have poverty everywhere, and, and there's all sorts of reasons, but a lot of it's just been spending. And I, I worked with a company during the recession that it was in, you know, when the, the wheels fell off in real estate and construction in this area, and so many people were unemployed. Everybody borrowed the limits of their housing. And then, their housing dropped in half, and they were, you know, they, but it's a big cultural thing about how, how well you live and how long you can live and are you ready. So, it's my little-
Yes, no, no.
I just want to bring that to every, because there's all these reasons we're having problems, but a lot of it we've chosen as a, as a generation.
The other thing you haven't mentioned is Oregon, I just looked on my Twitter feed Friday night, Oregon was 47 as far as acceptability as a retirement state. It was at the bottom. It was right down there with our graduation rate, which is because of our tax structure and everything. Number 47. Wow. So-
Well, I, I don't in any way profess to have any, what's, we're political explanation for any of these, or do I have a political opinion? But it's, yeah, it is what it is. Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
It's not, I don't think it's political.
Right.
We're number 47.
Yeah.
I mean, I was just like, looking for us, and I, you know, Alaska was 50, and we're right down there.
Yes, yes. Well, for whatever reason, for people's poor behavior or because of their circumstances, and there's plenty of people, I think, in both boats. I was brought up by two children of the Depression, so, you know, we saved every dime. And, and my father made me be an accountant, so I, I totally get it, I totally understand it. And I put in my money in the 401K since I was an early, early worker. But the reality is, so many people didn't. And, and so, we're now living with that, whether for better or worse. And so, since we're living longer, and we have less money, and we have more chronic illness, excuse me, chronic illnesses, one of the other lovely benefits of growing older is that dementia rates increase. The major cause of dementia is just living longer. So, the reality is, the longer we live, the greater the chance that we have dementia. Dementia is an incredibly expensive condition, and it's usually always borne by the family or the individual, because it's considered a custodial and not a, it's not something that you get better from, so it's often not paid for, for home care by Medicare, which, whether you agree with that or not, is just, again, one of the realities.
I thought potentially our age is, it was dropping, it's going the wrong way recently. The amount, yes.
Yes.
Because we are unhealthy.
Unhealthy, yes. There has been, and it, it differs by, by race and by economic, but in general, we are still growing older than we were in 1960s, when the Older Americans Act by the federal government was enacted, and when Social Security and everything was based on us probably dying before we were 65 years of age. So, now, we're living to, whether it's 75, 79, 82, we're still living a lot longer than that. And, and we're just not prepared as a society, both federal, state, county, and families, to, to deal successfully with those realities. And of course, there's always the ever-increasing cost of healthcare and pharmaceuticals. And of course, those are, those are the services most needed by those folks that are 75 and above.
You went over the cutbacks of Medicaid, Medicare, and Social Security.
Oh.
So, on one hand, there's the potential cutbacks, and the other is the can, you know, potential takeover, you know? We're hearing both agendas now, where some people say we should cut back all that stuff, some say we should have Medicare for all, and so, there'll be expansion of all those programs, if you're watching the presidential dialogue.
Well, I, I certainly do, mostly because I'm looking to see if the federal government is, and Congress is going to be able to pass a budget, so that we don't have another sequestration, which we suffered mightily from. And it looks like we won't, because they increased the spending caps. But we are still waiting to find out what the budgets are going to be per program. So, Medicaid, and this is actually from one of my past lives, along with Annabelle, I used to run large divisions of public senior living communities and skilled nursing facilities, et cetera. And the reality is that investors are not investing in building facilities for skilled nursing, primarily because most of the people in them are Medicaid and/or Medicare. And if they are building them, they're not taking more than a few Medicaid patients, because Medicaid doesn't pay enough to cover the costs. That's not a political issue, that's just a reality. Medicare is also struggling, and this is as a result, this is because of older adults, because we are living longer, we're trying heroic methods, we're, we're spending a lot of money on healthcare. And so, Medicare really, if we, if, in my opinion, this will be my agenda, that we would move more of the money from taking care of people after the fact in the hospital, and instead, provide for some money upfront for older adults who are living on their own to stay at home healthfully, so that they don't end up in a hospital and cost Medicare a lot more money. Social Security benefits, Social Security is incredibly important, safety net, but as we all know, it doesn't cover everyone's full costs. And yes, again, to those people that weren't good at saving or couldn't save, they, they are living on their Social Security benefits. So, they're just, that, that's the, the point of that bullet.
Is it becoming a primary retirement plan? I mean, when you look at the numbers, is it, do more people count on Social Security than any other retirement?
Obviously, it depends on their social economic status, but yes.
I mean, just the numbers. I assume it is.
It is. And in part, again, there's a lot of social reasons why people are living on Social Security and lower amounts of Social Security. A lot of people in their 50s and 60s were pushed out of the workforce, so they were forced to retire at 62, which is not the best age to get Social Security. So, they're living on smaller amounts of money than they expected to live on. And a lot of older adults would really like to be working, but aren't able to, because, and certainly not at the kinds of dollar amounts that they were making before if they were in professional careers, because they're obviously being replaced by younger and less expensive people. And, and so, they end up working in fast food places, Walmart, et cetera, just to make ends meet. And, and we have a number of those people here. I have two people that come to my congregate lunch here in Bend. One of them is living in his truck, and he's 75 years old. And another one is living in that little tom-tom motel in a single room. And they come to every one of the congregate meals they can go to, they go to all of the food banks, they, they go everywhere in order to stretch their, their budget. So, it is real. I can't explain-
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't count, yeah, it's very real. We all see it in the store, we see it everywhere now. And I think lots of people have concluded that, that they're going to keep working as long as they're healthy. Social Security doesn't pay very much.
Right.
It's, it's not enough to live on for most people. Even if you even own your house, it's barely.
Yeah.
So, I just was wondering, though, is it the primary retirement now, and there must be numbers, like 40% of people have only Social Security or 100, you know, I don't know, I've always, I've never seen the numbers, like you-
Yeah.
Have you ever seen the numbers?
I do, and I'm trying to remember in my head, there's a number of the average baby boomers' savings in their, their, whether it's 401K, IRA, whether it's in their savings account, that it was under $2,000. And they could not even afford a major car problem or a major problem in their house. So, yes, we're, people are, are not saving enough to live until 85, 90, as many people are living till. Okay. Council on Aging. Here we go. So, so who are we? The Council on Aging's mission is to advocate, empower, and guide older adults and their loved ones to live at home with independence and well-being. Our, what we advocate for and assist older adults in doing is to stay at home. 95% of older adults, when polled, and they're polled year after year by ARP, all want to stay home, in their house, living in the community that they've lived in their whole life. And many of them, even if they wanted to live in a community, can't afford it. Assisted living right now is anywhere from $5,000 to $9,000 a month, depending on the care needs that you have. So, that is really way out of, out of the ability of many of our older adults to pay for. So, the Council on Aging is a AAA, it's known as- So the Council on Aging is a AAA, it's known as an area agency on aging. We have sixteen area agencies on aging in Oregon. They are in every state of the United States. The Triple As were established by the Johnson administration in the sixties under the Older Americans Act, when older Americans were considered sixty and above. We have been a trusted nonprofit partner in our community since nineteen-seventy-five. We're headquartered in Bend, but we support Deschutes, Crook, and Jefferson Counties. In this past fiscal year, we've invested two-point-four million dollars, our budget, into the communities we serve in both labor costs and services that we provide to the community. We currently have twenty-three employees, combination of full-time and part-time, and four-hundred wonderful volunteers, mostly in our Meals on Wheels, who we could not, we could not survive without. So our role is to plan, coordinate, and oftentimes provide direct services that enable older adults to stay, living in their homes safely, independently, and with dignity. I have our annual report, which I'll share probably with Sharon to provide you, so we're coming up, we'll be producing our new one for fiscal year nineteen, but I just wanted to share a couple of our, a couple of the impacts that we think we make to the community in making it better for older adults. In this past fiscal year, we delivered with our senior center partners, who we fund, over eighty-two thousand meals. Unfortunately, that number has been flat for the last few years, and that's because our costs are going up, but our funding is not. So, but still eighty-two thousand is a lot of meals, and that is about seven-hundred-and-forty-two unduplicated clients. We have served almost forty thousand congregate dining lunches through the senior centers, which are our partners, and through the managed centers that we, the Council on Aging, provide. We do Meals on Wheels and also congregate lunches in Bend. Lepine, we do Meals on Wheels, and Sisters, we manage them directly. We field about twelve thousand calls with our information and resource specialists. We handle about a thousand-one-hundred conversations, either by phone or in person, with people that are approaching sixty-five and needing to understand, what is this Medicare and do I really need to sign up for it? And I'm still working and there's all kinds of challenges if you do not sign up, so we find that that is a very rewarding service for, regardless of your income level, we all are signing up for Medicare and need to make sure we do it right. We also produce a directory, a print directory of a hundred-and-twenty-eight pages called Directions, and this is, we've always printed it for the last, well, since the beginning, fifteen years ago when we started, because most older adults either don't have or don't use or their computers or know how to search, et cetera. So we produce this directory and we distribute it all over central Oregon, and this year we partnered with the Bulletin to distribute twenty-two thousand printed copies of this book in the Saturday newspaper. So it really, and of course, the people getting the Saturday newspapers and Sunday newspapers are mostly older adults that aren't reading them online, so it was a great distribution for us. We provide, we do not provide direct care service, we partner and fund about seven different home care companies in throughout central Oregon, and in this past year, we funded about six thousand hours of home care, which is housekeeping, cooking, companionship, maybe even laundry, et cetera, and then about four thousand hours of personal care, and that's where someone needs help in getting dressed and eating and toileting, et cetera. We also fund with grants caregiver respite grants. So most of the families, you know, they're home, especially if you have a mom or dad who's got dementia, you can't leave them alone, you have to go to the doctor yourself, get your own errands done, so we provide grants of up to a thousand dollars for caregivers so that they can go out and get their things done and hire someone to come in, even if it's a relative, we'll reimburse them.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On these home care, personal care, respite hours, are that, do you work with agencies or do you have people that sign up to be, I think you have a list of people that provide services, right?
We have a contract, we have a contract with seven home care companies. Every year, we have a contract, we identify which ones will be willing to work with us because the private rate, actually for home care, is now thirty dollars an hour, and we were paying last year twenty-five dollars an hour, we were reimbursing our partners, the home care companies. And this year, we had to increase it to twenty-seven, which is an eight percent increase, but we didn't get an increase for the amount of money we have to allocate to these services, so that means either fewer clients or fewer number of hours per client. Or it means we do a great job in fundraising and we have more money to offset.
You may have some other stuff about your funding later, or do you, or?
We have, it's actually in here on our funding, but I can tell you eighty-seven percent of our funding is from a combination of federal, state, and local grants. We are working very hard to diversify that funding because it's not increasing, and I'll talk a little bit later about the fact that in the last eleven years, under the Older Americans Act, our funding has increased in total twelve-point-five percent, in total dollars, not per year, but in total. So that's obviously not keeping up with cost of living, never mind demand, so.
And that's for the three-county area?
Yes, that, our budgets.
In eleven years, the population's gone up thirty percent, or twenty, I mean, Deschutes County's gone up probably thirty percent in eleven years.
Well, the population is, so what happens is the federal government allocates a certain amount of money to programs, and then those programs are distributed based on a formula to states, and then the states have another formula that distributes it out to the counties. And we have not seen an increase as long as I've been on the board from the state in terms of our formula.
When you, are you involved in seeking the funds or is it grant funds or is it just automatic flow-through funds?
Well, we have a, it's, for us, the federal funding and the state funding is a flow-through. We have a contract with the, all area agencies on aging have a contract with the state, and the monies from the federal government and the monies from the state, including the Oregon Project Independence, those monies flow to us based on a formula that the state has determined each county to get, so, or each area agency to get. So our formula hasn't changed for a number of years, and I keep asking every year if it's going to change since our population is increasing so much, but again, when you look at the bigger populations, Multnomah County, et cetera, and the density of those populations, we just always seem to come out with the same percentage, which is about, I think we're, I think we're about eight percent, seven percent, eight percent?
The budget?
Yeah, of the funds that are allocated out. So, so we, believe me, every year, we try to change that funding formula. We also have a lobbyist at our state association who lobbies both the federal government and the state and have been successful in at least not having the programs eliminated. Oregon Project Independence, which provides funding for caregiving, respite grants, et cetera, every single budget cycle, it is like the political football that is brought up to cut out of the program. And if we didn't have that, that's about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of our budget, so we're always shaking at budget time, like everyone else. We also provide nutrition education, both to our clients that are living in their homes as well as the congregate. Nutrition insecurity is one challenge, but what you eat is also important and impacts your ability to live a healthy life. We have a dietitian on staff who reviews and approves all of our menus for congregate and Meals on Wheels, but also goes out and does private, free counseling to those clients of ours that are challenged in this area. And we have, we used to be the manager of the operator of Dial-A-Ride many years ago, I think it was ten years ago, I was told, it was moved over to Cascades East Transit, but we continue to fund subsidized rides for Dial-A-Ride and older adults going to the senior centers, and that resulted in about sixty-five hundred subsidized rides. Any questions? Okay.
Real quick, before you, so you mentioned working with the senior center in Bend and Lepine and Sisters, but not Redmond?
Oh, yes, yes. We work, well, we work with all of the senior centers. Some of the senior centers, because each of the senior centers is very different. The senior center in Bend is really a fitness facility and is becoming even more so and multi-generational.
That's right.
Oh, you do, okay. So they have been a wonderful partner to us in that they've allowed us to use their kitchen so that we could manage Meals on Wheels daily operations from there. They could only accommodate us for one day a week for congregate meals, they had other activities happening. So in Bend, we've actually only been able, until our new building, to do one day a week of congregate meals in Bend. Now in Redmond and Lepine, very different, both of them are volunteer-based senior centers that provide all kinds of services to their clients. They're not physical fitness centers, but they do have, you know, some Tai Chi classes of which we fund, and they also have, they are the ones that actually operate Meals on Wheels and operate the congregate lunches, and we fund them. So we don't fund them a hundred percent, so I understand you'll probably get requests from some of the senior centers for additional monies. The federal government never expected the monies that it gave to the area agencies on aging to cover the full costs. It expected that matching dollars would be provided either through grants or donations or program income. So we provide the senior centers with three dollars and fifty cents for every client that comes for a congregate meal and/or that they provide a Meals on Wheel delivery to. And we also provide free, we provide mileage reimbursement for their volunteers. But in Bend, we actually implement the Meals on Wheels and congregate program. So they are our partners, I have a contract with all of the senior centers to say, here's the cap, this is as much as I can afford to provide in terms of the number of meals delivered, the number of clients served on Meals on Wheels, and the number of congregate diners that I can reimburse at three dollars and fifty cents. Okay. Okay, so one of the things that you may or may not be aware of is that the Council on Aging, after two years of searching for a place that we could either build or we could expand our own facility or rent a bigger facility, had the opportunity to bid on the Bend Community Center. Its prior occupants were not able to sustain it financially, so we purchased the center in April of two thousand eighteen. We've invested one-point-one million dollars to date between our mortgage as well as our reserves in capital to acquire and implement initial renovations on the building. We've also increased our, our operating budget has increased a hundred thousand by the acquisition of that new facility, one for the mortgage, but also for the cost of maintenance. I don't know if any of you have been in that building anytime recently, but the deferred maintenance is, is not a big enough word for that building. So we have been investing in, prior to our major renovation, which won't be for another year or two, we had to invest in replacing all the heating and cooling systems that weren't working, we had to rebuild the kitchen, the board of, the county health inspector, when she came in and saw what we had done to the kitchen and gave us a hundred percent on our survey, said, I was really afraid to come in here to look at it because every year when I used to go in to review this, I had to basically kind of shut my eyes and I knew that they were feeding homeless people and they had no money, but it was not a safe kitchen. So it is today, and we have implemented capital campaign. We're kind of in what they call the quiet period now, working with, with both government officials, educating them about our program, with both the state and the city and now the county about our plans for this new facility and our capital campaign, and we've been really excited about the feedback that we've gotten from major community, both investors or donors, as well as people in the community that are known as contributors to these kinds of causes. So we're looking to raise two million more for the building renovation, and we are looking to, the total capital campaign will be for three million dollars because we want to build a million-dollar service pot, if you will, to help us to grow and to diversify away from just funding from the government. So we are currently on Greenwood, if you have ever driven by this cute little building, which was the, I'm told, the first home of the first district attorney of Bend. So we purchased that home in the downturn, which was great, so we own it outright, and now we are just a block and a half away from our new home. So we're working with the architects and with Sun West, and our, Ascent is our architects, and Sun West won the bidding for this project. We've already gotten through construction documents and we're in the bidding phase right now. What we're hoping to do is really keep as much of the old, old presence of this building, including the steeple, the brick, it was originally a church built in the forties and with many, many add-ons and many lives before it. So one of the big things that we're investing in that are pretty expensive is to rebuild the ramp in the front because the current ramp is really not functional, it's not dangerous, but it's not functional, and we're putting heating in underneath because we learned in the snow, with the snow and the ice, and the last thing we need is seniors coming up and falling. On the other side of the front of the building, we're going to have a little community garden so that we can grow fruits and vegetables for our kitchen and also so that the older adults, this will be an activity that they will manage. The inside will be, as you can see, a little small, but we have the kitchen, which will be renovated, part of it will be renovated, we've undertaken a big part of the renovation just to get it ready so that we could now do Meals on Wheels and congregate. We are currently in the building, I have ten staff members in the building, we are doing Thursday congregate lunches since the senior center is closed for renovations, so we are in there cooking lunches on Thursdays, and we serve about forty to fifty older adults every Thursday. The doors open at ten o'clock and they, we have at least ten to fifteen people that come in just to have coffee and free coffee, sit down, play cards, games, and have someplace to go, have companionship. So we are also managing Meals on Wheels production every day, Monday to Friday, out of this facility, but it will really undergo an entire redesign of the inside, and what we're hoping to have this is a one-stop shop, if you will, for where do I go to get information? And what I would really like to have happen is in these community rooms and conference rooms, I've been trying to get DHS interested in maybe having one of their Medicaid counselors that could be working out of this facility, so when older adults come, the first thing we do is try to see if they can, are eligible for Medicaid. So if they, we think that they are eligible, we have to send them all the way over to the county building. We would like to be able to help them right there, get their application filled out with assistance, and then be able to help them with other services that we can provide. I'm also talking to the Latino Community Association, Brad Porterfield, their executive director, about having one of their employees in our facility to provide Spanish-language assistance to our clients, which right now, we don't have many of, we used to have a bilingual information resource specialist, but because we didn't have the relationship that the Latino Community Association and that trust, we didn't, we didn't have them coming to us, so we believe by having them in our building that will make a big difference. We're going to have a resource library, we're going to have a social room, a patio, it will be a place for services, a place for, for community congregation nutrition services, and it's about five times larger than our current facility. So this new services center, many people have said to us, oh, so this is great for people in Bend, but what about the rest of central Oregon? So this service center that we're building will be the foundation upon which a new generation of inclusive, age-friendly, if you've not heard that term before, age-friendly programs and services will be developed to meet the needs of rapidly changing and growing older adults. We've just recently hired a programs man, a director of strategic initiatives, and her job is to go out and And her job is to go out and develop partnerships with the St. Charles's and the Mosaic Medicals and to expand the programs that we offer and to develop new programs. We've not really changed our programs since the Older Americans Act in the 60s because that's all the federal government will pay for. We did have 11 listening sessions or focus groups with our constituents in Q1 of 2019. 119 of our, both older adults and community leaders came to talk to us about met and unmet needs for older adults. The findings will provide a baseline for our strategic planning as well as our new service development. The good news was that much is working. Senior activities and exercise classes abound throughout Central Oregon. Meals on Wheels was, was mentioned unaided very early on as an important service that many people certainly knew about and many had taken advantage of. Food banks are critical for helping to augment the food insecurity of older adults and, quite frankly, all ages. Senior centers, assisted living, we have a good supply of assisted living and home health and hospice here in Central Oregon. Libraries are utilized very actively by our older adult population, especially the computers and learning, you know, getting DVDs and things that help them to have their own activities. Senior community meals and dial-a-rides to the senior center. That was the good news. The opportunities for improvement, people didn't know where to go for information. With all the work that we do in creating directories and in getting out our name and our information, there still is a lack of awareness in the older adult population of where to go for goods and services. There's a high fragmentation of services, like I mentioned earlier. You have to go to one building for one service, you go to another. And this is really difficult for people that are older and confused. Not enough food getting to those in need. Food insecurity is still an issue. Transportation and affordable housing continue to be the biggest issues and certainly are for older adults. Transportation is primarily door-to-door transportation. That's the issue. Getting to medical appointments, getting to the grocery store. Dial-a-ride is only for people that financially qualify. And you have to also provide quite a bit of advance notice when you need to go somewhere. Isolation is a huge issue. Suicide, mental illness, that's why meals like congregate meals are so important, why having a volunteer go to Meals on Wheels clients' homes and spend time with them is so important. Employment for seniors, like I mentioned earlier, seniors, a lot of seniors have to work and a lot of them want to work. Purpose is very important. You know, people always say, I want to retire at 65 and golf. Even if they can afford to do that, it gets boring after a while and you want to have a sense of purpose, which is why most of our volunteers are 60, 70, 80s, and 90s and stay until they literally can't do it anymore. Home repair and snow removal are services that are probably the most needed by older adults and are not really covered by any kind of funding. But we have been able, especially in this last horrible winter, to not only do we provide packages for all of our clients to have shelf-staple meals for five days, but we have also been going out there and doing a lot of shoveling ourselves so that our clients are not literally stuck in their, in their homes and dental care. Okay, the Service Partner Grant, wow. So we are so grateful for the last several years that I've been associated with the organization that the Board of County Commissioners has funded, provided monies for Meals on Wheels and Congregate. Last year, we had requested and received $30,000 for program support and $20,000 toward that kitchen maintenance and repair and new purchasing of equipment that I talked about. That program support is primarily for providing half an FTE for direct service personnel, the people that run Meals on Wheels, that manage the volunteers, et cetera. And then about $7,500 toward food and supplies. The $20,000 that we spent for kitchen equipment and maintenance, that money was very quickly absorbed. I underestimated, despite my accounting background, how much it was going to take to get that kitchen ready for use right now. So in 1819, we requested $50,000 for program support for Meals on Wheels. And this was to fund the unmet need or contribute to the funding of the unmet need, which I'll show you. Right now, we have 30 people on waitlist. We've had them on waitlist. We've had a waitlist of 30 for almost a year. Last year, it was 15. We currently have 15 in Redmond and 15 in Prineville. And it takes about $2,500 per year per Meals on Wheels client. So we have about a $75,000 shortfall. And this is after not just the federal, state, and local funding that we get, but almost all of our funding that we get for donations goes to Meals on Wheels. So that's another $150,000. The other shortfall that we have is the Lapine Senior Center. The Lapine Senior Center finally has this fabulous administrator who's going out and shaking the trees, Jamie Donahue, and bringing in every older adult for lunch and activities, which is great. But she's well over her budget. And she currently has only three days a week that they provided lunches. And now she wants to go to five days a week. So it'd take me another $20,000 to give her to provide an extra two days of Meals on, excuse me, congregate lunches. And we're about short of $50,000 over what we've already received from the Board of County Commissioners for the kitchen upgrade. We had to upgrade basically water heaters. We had to upgrade all of our, what do you call those things? The steam trays, the steam trays. We had to fix the refrigerator and the freezer. We're completely kaput. We had to replace all the lighting in there. It costs us $15,000 just to have it cleaned. So we have invested in that. But of course, those monies, not the capital, because we don't get reimbursed by the government for that, but the expense part of it comes directly out of the monies that we would have for food. As I mentioned earlier, our funding, our federal funding for nutrition programs is not growing. Congregate grew 12.4% for, over a nine-year period. And home-delivered meals grew at 15.5. In large measure, that was also because of sequestration, where everyone took an immediate 10% cut. So we're still fighting our way back from those cuts. This year, we got our contracts. We're flat-funded for all of our services. And in fact, we lost $65,000 for, for educate, for health promotion services. The state decided that that was no longer necessary. So even though we spent every one of those $65,000 supporting Tai Chi and all kinds of programs at all the senior centers, the state took it away. So we are now minus 65 over last biennium's funding. And as I said, private grants, we have some program revenue, which is basically donations from people that are getting our services. And donations from our donors are critical to supporting our increased need, but they're not keeping pace with demand. Any questions on the Service Partner Grant? Okay, and the last one is a quick, easy, discretionary grant request. So we submitted a grant request the end of June for $2,000 toward the purchase of a commercial washer and dryer. The washer and dryer that was in that building went out with all the other things that didn't work. We need the washer and dryer for cleaning our towels, our linens, the aprons, mats. Since we're now running it as a fully operational kitchen, we have daily cleaning needs. So currently, we outsource the cleaning to a vendor. It's costing us about $100 a month to outsource the cleaning. And the vendor will not allow us to have, send them our table linens. So we have to have an employee who goes to the laundromat and sits there and waits while the table linens are all cleared because that's the only way we can, unless we rent them at a higher cost from the vendor. So that's an additional $60 a month plus labor. The, we've identified the washer and dryer, about $2.6 thousand, sorry, yes, $2.6 thousand for a commercial washer and dryer. Installation and hardware, another about $600. Benefits, payback in less than two years. We have labor savings. And we have operational control on when and how we clean our linens and have them available for operations. And post-payback, the savings that we have will be available to support additional client meals instead of us continuing to literally throw the money into the laundry. Sorry, that took a little longer than I thought. It's good. I would, I'd love, if you have any additional questions or comments or...
So the observation from my point of view is you're doing a great job putting the big picture out there, you know, for the community, for the needs, you know. From our budgeting point of view, we're seeing it multiple times throughout the year. So that's why we said, let's get together, let's all talk about what's going on here, understand the big picture, because it's wonderful to be able to support these financially. But as I say, if we kept getting them throughout the year, it's like, well, let's all compare notes here and talk about what's going on. It's exciting to have these senior centers and food opportunities in the different cities here in Central Oregon, especially the four in Deschutes County. The big effort in Bend is the big one, obviously. It's going to be the office space, it looks like, too.
It will be, yes.
Will you be giving up your other building at some point?
No, because we're actually already out of space in the...
There'll be offices and then that...
Yeah, what we hope to do is keep the building that we own, the smaller building, and repurpose that as offices so that we can, a couple of years down the road, convert more of the new building into client space and more community area. So we've already, in going through the whole architectural design and construction documents period, realized we are, we've literally are capped out with all the programs and the people that we're envisioning. And so we had initially thought we were going to sell the building, but now we think we're going to keep it and again, move more of the back office staff, keep them in that building and keep the service-front-facing folks in the Bend. We haven't named it yet. The Services Center, the Services Center. Yes, there is an opportunity for those of you who might be interested and have some spare cash, yes, to name the building and in fact, all the different rooms within the building.
I think I went to a meeting at your current facility and it was, what, up the outside stairs through a room that probably was a bedroom out to an enclosed balcony? Was that the office?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, yes. That's our current building. Yes, yes. We have a person in that balcony. That's an office.
Mr. Derr, comments or thoughts?
So how many square feet are in the new building?
8,750.
And how many are in the old?
700, 1,700, except four times.
All right. And so what was the purchase price on the new building?
The purchase price was $100 a square foot, so 875,000. Where can you get $100 a square foot for a building in?
Where can you get it?
We bought a building in Sisters with kind of the same thinking. We're, the price of the land and the building, we're about, you know...
Yeah, it's amazing. Everything we looked at when we were looking to either purchase land or purchase a building, it all came out to a minimum $250 to $300, and that was being frugal, a square foot.
So when you, so you did get this fabulous buy?
Yes.
Okay, and you, you know, you've taken your building four times bigger.
Yeah.
But you're still saying that you, you can't sell that original building?
No. Well, we can, but we will have absolutely no opportunity for growth and we will have absolutely no way to move more staff that are back office staff out of the building that we hope to make more for client services as opposed to the accounting department or, you know, the program administrators.
Development. So what is your, what is it? What is your budget annually then?
Our budget is 2.4 million.
It is 2.4?
Yeah.
23 employees then?
Yes. Yes. Most of our budget is not our employees.
And just, so the new center really replaces what was the original senior center that the Parks and Rec bought. And then it kind of became, like you said, a gym more than a senior center. And so this is really a new senior center, really, is what, I mean, you're not calling it that, but it's replacing what was a senior center 10 years or more ago. Because I've watched that evolution. Because we live right off Reed Market, right next to it.
Yes.
And there, I knew there was controversy because the original senior, I forget the name of the senior group.
United Senior Citizens of Bend.
The seniors thought that they didn't get enough for it or they were kind of forced out. And so, yeah, so I, I don't know all the, I don't know what's factual, but I just...
We still have, we still have some of them coming to our lunches. They're very happy to be back in the building.
Really, it's a new senior center in a way. I mean, it's bigger than, more than that. And I get your redefining, branding it, but the point is it's a place for those activities that are no... The new, what they're building on Reed Market now is really another kind of juniper.
It absolutely is, yes. There will be a section of it that will remain what they consider senior services for senior fitness. They won't be having food services there other than a little bistro. And the thing about Park and Rec is almost all the services in Park and Rec are monetized. So you can't just go there and kind of hang out and partake of things. And so that's great for people who have, have means. But the folks that we primarily see, for those that are coming in for the meals and coming in for socialization, are people that can't even afford, you know, $40 a month to be a participant in it. So we will never be doing, we'll never be doing any kind of activities like physical fitness. That's not our, our mission. But we do address the issues of nutrition, which happen in almost all senior centers, and isolation and loneliness. And then, in large measure, helping people to get connected to the services that help them to stay at home, which most senior centers do not do.
How big is the group that works with people so they can stay in their homes? I mean, how many employees are there?
So we have, we have four case managers. We have two information and resource specialists. We have a client services manager. We have all the nutrition, the others are the nutrition staff. So we have three nutrition staff that are the folks that manage Meals on Wheels and manage the congregate lunches. And we have a dietitian, and then we have a manager of the nutrition programs.
Okay, so you, back to my original question. How many people work with people to stay at home? So you're saying four case managers work with all your seniors in order to make sure they can stay in their home? And then you have, and is any, does anybody else, just those four?
No, no, no. So all of us work to keep people in their homes. Every one of us has a role in doing that, different roles. But those that have direct client responsibility, four case managers. And those four case managers work and provide the funding to seven of our home care worker agencies. So what the case managers do is they go out and qualify people for the service. They do an assessment, determine how much care they need, and then go back. And within our budget, they will hire one of our home care companies to go and provide those services. And those services are 5, 6,000 for home care hours, 4,000 for personal care and respite. But four people are actually case managers. Two do informational and referral. The receptionist is the first line of questioning. And she's the person who actually routes everybody through. So she's certainly direct service. We have program managers, three program managers, that develop the services and administer them, whether it's, whether it's our nutrition services, whether it's Medicare counseling. We do legal aid. We partner with legal aid. So they come in and do free consults every quarter for, in each one of the senior centers. And we manage all those programs. We have a director of services who is responsibility. She's just been recently come on board. Her responsibility is going to be to develop partnerships and develop new services. And we're focused on transportation primarily and also focused on affordable housing. Just recently, I met with John Gilbert, who heads up the Pacific Crest. And ever since we bought that building across the street, since I used to do development in senior living communities, I saw that pawn shop across the street and that big parking lot. And I'm like, whoa, this just got rezoned. This could be dense residential. So we could put up a four-story affordable housing. So, we could put up a four-story affordable housing community with Mosaic Medical on the ground floor, like Housing Works is doing in Redmond and now on Twenty-seventh. Yes. So, she's working on those kinds of partnerships. We're also working with St. Charles right now to, instead of waiting until somebody goes home and gets sick and then needs help when they come out of the hospital, they're going to be working with us to identify people that might need Meals on Wheels immediately after they come home from the hospital. So, we just recently have the Director of Population Health added to our Board of Directors, and she would be responsible for helping to make that happen. So, there are a lot of us that are doing program development and partnerships in addition to those that are doing direct client service.
So, the Lapine program for the, you know, the thousand-dollar reimbursement if your income's under thirty thousand, did you, did you ship that down to the Lapine Senior Center then, you know, the forest, you know, part of your property?
Oh, oh, okay.
Did you just ship that down to Lapine then?
No, actually, that was, they came to us. That organization came to us. They had a grant already. And what they needed, they didn't have any access to older adults.
Right.
So, they wanted, so what we do with them is we identify the people that would benefit. And they are, they have to be in the Sun River-Lapine area to participate in this grant. So, we identify those people, and we refer them to the organization that pre-qualifies them. So, we're their, we're their input, if you will, for...
Deschutes River Communities Grant.
Yes.
They're going to be down to Lapine, what was I realizing?
Yeah, yeah.
So, has anybody been able to put that together then? Do you know, if it's, it's been a couple of weeks now, but I've seen your name on it. Is anything happening there?
Uh, I would have to ask with our cli- I ask our client services manager. That's, we have a lot of services like that, that we, we help refer into people. And I, I don't know the status of all of them, but I can find out and let you know.
It is critical of that.
Yeah. No, no, it definitely is.
And it was a lot of...
Yes, yes. No, I will, I will check, and I will email you today.
Thank you.
The next month or two is the time to really prepare for some of those fuel reduction efforts, because it's the hottest, driest time of the year. But yeah, come September and October and November, that'd be the time to implement if at all possible, so...
Absolutely.
I have a couple of questions, and we're going to probably have to wrap this up. It's, it's been good because we had a longer time. When we set the agenda, we're not quite sure how long it'll take. But, you know, it's been really valuable to have you here. I, I don't know, Dr. Pelham, do you want to say anything or appreciate you...
He's doing a great job out there.
Being part of this and...
I'm an entire professor. I have done a lot of talking in the past.
I imagine you have. Well, that's, it's great to have somebody with your background and living in our community and...
Thank you. You're very kind. Good to be here.
Sharing that, because it's, everything you're saying about the trends and the problems and things we see in our county and in our position, we see it with, you know, the issues of a whole variety of things. So, coming in and kind of filling in what you're doing, one of the things that we, it's hard to understand the amount of different groups that do different things in the community. So, to see the whole picture was really what we were, what we'd wanted to learn. And Sarah, for you to come in and host them is good, because we didn't know how the connection worked. I did have a couple of questions. One is, do any other public bodies, cities, Parks and Rec, do they contribute to what you're doing in any way or money-wise?
Uh, we don't receive anything from Park and Rec. What we did receive was, I guess you would say, free rent to manage Meals on Wheels and Thursday congregate lunch. So, I guess that would...
Now, it's interesting to me, because it, having lived here, and I pay the, pay Parks and Rec's tax bill, as we all do here. Are they going to replace that free rent with some contribution to what you're doing now?
I have not had that conversation with them. Given how difficult I heard from the folks that are managing the, the new renovation, it was to raise the funding for that. It didn't sound like they had a lot of money to, to contribute elsewhere. But...
Well, that's, yeah, that's interesting. I, I just am curious because it's, our Park and Rec spends a ton of money on lots of things for youth and youthful people that are out kayaking and competing, or ice rinks, or parks, or this huge new facility. But it'd be an interesting conversation to have, is would they help in some way, because there's a certain amount of Park and Rec in all of us as we age.
Yes.
And, and you're absolutely right about just fitness and interactions. And it seems to me that's a natural outgrowth of what Park and Rec should be doing, is what do you do for the sixties, seventies, and eighties? Because we all realize how important it is, and it's hard to get motivated. You know, you talk about isolation, the living alone, and it, you know, it's just like nutrition gets hard, so does exercise, so does happiness. I mean, everything. And so, that's one. So, they, so far, you haven't had that conversation?
No, but is it Mr. Horton? Is that the, Don Horton? He's on my target list for the capital campaign to have a conversation with, to give us either input on our, our business plan for it and/or potentially some contacts that he might be able to make to help us to reach others that might be able to donate. And I don't know that Park and Rec actually can, but I'm always willing to ask.
Your campaign now, we're, I hadn't really heard that you were doing a campaign. So, I don't know how you're getting that out, but I'm, I'm just wondering.
It's, yes, we're, we're still in the quiet phase. So...
What's your timeline for the three minutes?
Well, we had a, we had a timeline that I guess was a little more aggressive than I had anticipated. We were hoping to start construction in April of this upcoming year. We may be moving it back between six months and a year, because apparently we're competing with four other very worthy capital campaigns that are going on in Bend right now.
What are those?
Uh, the Humane Society, the High Desert Museum, the Environmental Center, Partners in Care. So, all worthy organizations, and right after the Bend Land Mans. So...
There's lots of campaigns.
Yeah, a lot of people have been tapped.
There's a lot of resources also.
Yes, yes, exactly. And, you know, our community is growing, and, and we truly believe that this is an investment for the community. It's, it's not just for older adults. It's, you know, for their families. We're all going to be, if we're lucky, older adults and aging at some point in time.
Yeah. Some of us are.
Oh, yeah. But I'm, I'm the age of our clients. So, yeah, no, I'm, I'm over sixty, so I am a client.
Lots of people that are, you know, and that's, a lot of people are moving here for that.
Yes, yes, indeed.
So, four other campaigns. So, you're tied in. Okay.
You will probably start hearing more about it. What we've been counseled is that at about the eighty-five percent mark of which you've raised funds, that's when you go out to the community in a, in a more active presentation to get the last fifteen percent, because it's really the, the big donors that bring in the first eighty-five percent. And, and foundations. We're working with the Collins Foundation, Headco, Samuel Johnson. We're working with Weinberg, and all of them have been positive. And OCF, just put in a grant up to OCF. But they all take up to, you know, a year before they're decided and the funds are available. So, we're probably looking a, a good six months to a year before we'll be able to start construction, which is why we had to invest in fixing the air conditioning and the heating and all these things so that we could be in the building using it. Thank you very much for your time. Great. And I invite you to come, anyone who would like to come to a congregate meal on Thursdays at twelve o'clock, or do Meals on Wheels Drive Along. We, we've had city councilors and state senators come and, and do Meals on Wheels Drive Alongs to our clients, and they've really just walked away amazed at the, the volunteers and amazed at what of value it provides to our clients. So, please, if you're interested, let us know.
Thank you.
Do I sign my husband up?
Yeah.
Send him lunch. Tell me you did. I need to go to the market.
Well, thanks, Sarah, for coming today, and we'll see you again. Thank you very much. And if you want to share your corporate reports, let's share on that. We can, we, yeah. Yeah, that's all right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We'll move on. Our next item on our agenda is the non-prime resource lands update. Easy one.
Morning, Commissioners for the Redwood, Zechariah Heck, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department, here with our Planning Manager, Peter Gutowski, and our Director, Nick Lelech. Today, we are here on behalf of the Planning Commissioners as they are seeking direction from the Board on the scope and its review and potential process of the non-prime resource land amendments. The policies and criteria of the amendments are provided for you in your meeting packet on page eighty-seven. Just a quick overview of the amendments. Really, there's two components that comprise the amendments. The first component, excuse me, list or provides comprehensive plan policies that specify six specific areas committed to residential areas and that were platted or conveyed prior to state-enabling planning legislation. And then, the second part of the amendments focuses on the county at large, basically establishing eligibility criteria for exclusive farm use and forest use zone properties throughout the county. The last time the Planning Commissioners met, they voted in favor to recommend passing along to the Commission the Board of County Commissioners support of, of Component One, focused on the six specific residential areas. They also voted in favor of resubmitting a 2015 letter that the Planning Commissioners and the Board sent to the Land Conservation and Development Commission regarding non-resourced lands.
Just real quick. So, when you say voted supporting, I think you called it Section One, is in our packet, is Section One, what is Section One? Is it the, what starts on page two, or?
We don't have the packet numbers.
The, the policy amendments, the memo that staff drafted to the Board is for four to six pages. And Section Three, under Policy Amendments, it's packet page eighty-seven. Those list out the, the policies and the criteria for both amendments. We do not necessarily...
No, keep on going. No, turn it back. Policy, policy, if you flip it over, is noted on Section, do you see Section Three where it says Policy Amendments?
Um...
Second page of your memorandum?
Yeah, page two of seven.
Well, I saw that, but...
So, policies three point one, one point nine to three point one, one point one-six are what the Planning Commission recommended for the Board's consideration.
So, you're calling that a section?
We call that sec- we tried to split off the two amendments and keep thinking of them as kind of two components. The Section One are those policies that is Zec noted, Mr. Chairman, pertain to the residential areas that we think are, those areas that are committed to residential uses.
That's page three and four in our little pack, our memo here. Okay. So, that's your calling Section One, and they've recommended that we approve these, this wording and this... Okay.
Correct. And, and so, the, the question at hand and what we're here on behalf of the Planning Commission is that they're seeking direction from the Board on whether or not they are, the direction from the Board to the Planning Commission is for them to dive into the criteria focusing on Component Two. Again, that's the, the establishing eligibility criteria throughout the county.
Which is this goal, what you're calling Goal One, which starts on page two and goes to, so that's Section One or whatever. What do you call it?
That would, that would be non-prime resource lands twenty, or that's Component Two that we, that is in the memo.
Mr. Chairman, you're right. It's, it's basically Goal One, and it pertains to the non-prime resource land general policies. So, we essentially had to customize a goal and a policy that pertain to those areas that are committed to residential uses. But then, there's the broader discussion of, do we want to incorporate eligibility criteria in the form of comprehensive plan policies that describe the properties that are eligible to utilize a non-resourced lands process to change either farm, we've seen nothing but farm land conversion, or exclusive farm use zoning to multiple use agricultural ten. But it puts the county in a position to inform eligible property owners who have currently zoned farm or forest properties to redesignate them. And if we're successful, to a zoning designation, that would be a non-prime resource land, twenty acres. It does get confusing.
It is a minimum twenty acres.
That's our proposal, is twenty acre minimum parcel.
Oh.
The other one is ten.
Correct. The goal for the, the committed, there's six committed residential areas. Those six areas can't be land divided today. And the approach is, as we, if we're successful, is those six areas would not be able to be land divided through these, through these policy amendments. And if we established a non-prime resource lands ten zone, the whole purpose is to recognize that those are residential uses that are essentially platted subdivisions, and we should allow those uses outright like we do in Commissioner DeBonne's neighborhood.
So, those six areas, they're already parceled, and they're less than ten, probably.
Yeah, Section Thirty, Section Thirty-six has average parcel size of eleven acres. It's in a wildlife area combined.
There's no way to subdivide. You'd have to have more than twenty to make two tens to even do that. So, there's no opportunity for partialization in all six of those.
In the Section Thirty-six area, it's zoned forest use today. And you have to have a minimum of a hundred and sixty acres to create two eighty-acre parcels. So, our approach, again, for that area and the other five, is to acknowledge that they're, just as you noted, Commissioner, they're owned by multiple property owners. They're heavily parceled. They have residential infrastructure and residential lotting patterns. It's impractical, and we think we, we're in a position to art, make forth a legal argument to demonstrate that they're not farm or forest lands.
And there's no opportunity for partialization at all in any of those sixteen?
Today, correct, based on our zoning today.
So, the, the ten is kind of a construct we're inventing to, because that's kind of the minimum in, in rural areas. But it, it, most of these parcels, as Commissioner DeBonne's saying, are actually less, except for Thirty-six. So, but there, some of the parcels are empty.
Correct.
So, you're saying that those could still, they would then be able to build a house if they're empty, even though they're only five acres?
Correct. The intention is a rural residential use.
Flat out. They won't have to go through a planning process of, what do they do now? They're, it's...
A conditional.
Conditional use. So, they would flat out it, so that we'd be able to fill up those subdivisions with any new houses without a conditional use. But as a practicality, all of them are less than ten already. And so, the ten's just kind of a, in my mind, it's kind of a construct that we're, yeah, okay.
I anticipate, just as we have digested the public testimony to date, we likely will cut, to the extent, once this is officially before we hit a public hearing, I think we can strengthen the policy that, that deals with the minimum parcel size of ten acres, because it gets confusing. People think, wait, I have a vacant property. I'm under ten acres. Just as the Chair noted, the intention is to allow residential uses outright. I think we will offer a policy modification that says, you know, minimum parcel size of ten acres and no further land divisions are allowed, which is consistent with the zoning today. But again, the purpose is, is to treat it as a rural residential ten zone, which is where the Commissioner DeBonne is, is, that's his zoning designation. It allows residential uses or their accessory uses as a use permitted outright, subject to meeting the setbacks and whatnot. So, it eliminates that three to four thousand dollar land use fee and months of process to, to complete the entitlement.
About how many empty parcels are there in the six subdivision, or, I'll call them subdivisions, but six areas?
Most of them are subdivisions, so that, that's fair terminology.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's about fifty percent. There's just over two hundred and, I think it's two hundred and thirty-seven lots total, and just over, I think, a hundred and ten or so are, are vacant.
And is the biggest obstacle to, to making them have residences, the, this process? Or is it the conditions are not, I don't know, the territories, the conditions are not amenable to building a house because of the...
Transportation improvements also. You know, that Section Thirty-six does not have right-ofways associated with the partialization and road improvements also. So, there's other layers to this. But I've had resident, you know, property owner call and say... But I've had resident, you know, property owner call and say, why, I've owned this property for X amount of time, and why can't I even talk about putting a house on my property? So, it just doesn't make sense from the owner's point of view sometimes, and then you have to explain the whole history of land use in the state of Oregon.
So, so we've got a proposal from the Planning Commission to go ahead and approve that, so that comes to us automatically as a hearing, it'll come to us now, there's no stepping back or relooking at that, that's going to come to us as a hearing, and we'll, we'll vote on that essentially?
Mr. Chairman, what I would, what essentially the Planning Commission has done is they've, for the areas that are, that the six committed areas to residential uses, they've finished their deliberation. They respectfully have asked, wanted to check in with this Commission to see if the Commission would be comfortable, they, during their, they've had two deliberations, they were interested in discussing, you know, should these other eligibility criteria be considered in relationship, maybe with the proximity to a, a rural community or to an urban growth boundary. We, we aren't able to decouple the two and bring them back because I'm mindful that if, if, we want to make sure that the county's existing process today, which we don't have any eligibility criteria in our comprehensive plan, but today, someone like the Department of State lands or any, those property owners on the east side event, today, they can come forward following the state's criteria and propose to redesignate EFU property to multiple use agricultural ten. I want to be mindful that we have to have policies that still allow that process to occur in the event that our policies pertaining to residential, committed residential areas, if that's challenged, want to make sure that we don't inadvertently close the door on the non-resource lands process that the state affords us today. So, we have eligibility criteria that deal with those other, ignore the six committed residential areas, we have these eligibility criteria that we're trying to recognize, state criteria, local criteria, and if we decouple them, I, I would be concerned that, again, if we weren't careful, the, we could inadvertently prevent somebody from utilizing the existing process today, because we're essentially saying, hey, we want, we have our own local criteria that recognizes state law, we have these exclusive six areas that are essentially a carve-out that are under extenuating circumstances. I really want to be able to bring you, once the planning, once you feel ready for the Planning Commission's recommendation, to bring you both, because there is an interdependence on them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does, in a way, but I, so you're saying that we can't, you don't think we should go forward with these six if we don't also do the larger change? And that, I thought it was, I thought that was still a choice, or?
I guess, I'm sorry if I was confusing you, what, what I think is that-
It's confusing generally, I don't-
Yeah, it is, what I-
The whole thing's confused.
Yeah, what I would offer is that, even if, I, I would like you to consider the Planning Commission's recommendations as it pertains to the entire amendments. If you decide that, that the eligibility criteria should be postponed, we'll want to work with you and legal counsel to make sure that our commitment to these six committed residential areas, the policies that we propose, still afford other property owners today who feel and can demonstrate that their farmland is not farmland, that that process is still made available, and-
Well, why would we, why would our process change that? I mean, that seems like that's a well-established course. Everybody, if you go have a farm, you can prove that's non, or you have EFU land, you can prove it's non-farmable, spend a bunch of money on a soil scientist and all these studies, you can do that through a state process, why does ours get rid of that option? Or why would it, why is it risk getting rid of that option?
It, it doesn't, I think, if this, if, maybe this helps, just to, again, step back. One track is, is just to, to correct mapping errors for the six areas. That's what the Planning Commission has recommended approval for the six residentially committed areas. The other track is to provide rules for anybody that wants to do exactly, Mr. Chairman, as you just suggested, that they want to change the zoning of their, of their property. Goal Two and those policies apply just to the correcting mapping errors. Goal One policies apply to both, both the rules for anybody that wants to come in, as well as, not all of them, but some of them also apply to the correcting of, of the mapping errors, Goal Two. Goal One applies to, to both scenarios, Goal Two just applies to the other one. You do have a choice on, on what you ultimately choose to adopt or not. I think the, where the key is, do you want, it makes it more challenging if we bring them to you one at a time as opposed to a package. The Board may ultimately decide you only want to approve one or the other, and we can then extract the, the policies that are not currently interwoven and, and interdependent.
If I may, let me give you an example of, I like the way you framed it, we're trying to keep it simple, the Goal One policies that pertain to how one demonstrates that they have non-resource lands. We have a policy right now that's drafted, Policy Three Point One, One Point Eight, that says until a non-prime resource lands twenty zone is adopted, because remember, this is just the policy construct, this is the legal framework that if we're successful, gives, with your direction, CDD the ability to develop zoning for these eligible lands. So, Policy Three Point One, One Point Eight, until a non-resource lands twenty zone is adopted, property owners can continue as before and apply for a rezone from exclusive farm use to multiple use agriculture. What I'm mindful of is that, as this Commission knows, is you can be more restrictive than state law. Counties could say, we're not interested in non-resource lands, we could, we could adopt that in our comprehensive policy, and you could effectively prevent eligible property owners from utilizing the state's process. What, what, what I'm trying to underscore with Nick's help and Zachariah's, is that we just want to make sure that we still have draft policies that honor the existing process. We're, we anticipate Central Oregon Land Watch and possibly Thousand Friends with recent testimony may appeal it. So, I, by giving you both, both amendments at once, as you debate the merits of both, we can ensure ultimately, if you do recommend Component One or Component Two or both, or some hybrid, that we're still recognizing that the non-resource lands provisions that are in state law today can continue to apply. We are obviously, with the Board's support, introducing matters of first impression, and I'm just mindful that if we are not successful before the Land Use Board of Appeals, that we don't inadvertently close the door on, on the process that's afforded to parties today.
So, the guidance, it sounds like to keep this together as a package, let the Planning Commission chew on it a little bit more and see if this can get a little bit more mature, acknowledging that, yeah, we may have resistance or direct conflict with state, I mean, DSL has said as much, that this doesn't even make sense in their world. Yeah. I mean, this is interesting, this choice right now.
I do have a clarification, when you were talking about the forestry land, and if it's a hundred and sixty acres, they're only allowed to break it into eighty each, and that's their minimum? Like the person from Sisters that was talking to me a year ago, they were building a house on their hundred and eighty acres, they ran out of money, and they wanted to sell some of their land. So, all they, they could actually only sell, they, they couldn't sell ten acres, they have to sell eighty acres.
Yeah, that's currently true.
Commissioner, you're, you're exactly right. They, they could put themselves in a position to partition their hundred and eighty acre property. They, they have, there's a process for us that, that is codified or, that's consistent with state law, but because they exceed the minimum parcel size for partitioning, you can only partition farm or forest properties. So, yeah, they could theoretically partition eighty acres or eighty-five acres, they have to have a minimum parcel size of eighty, and that would have given them, yeah, an opportunity to, you know, generate a transaction.
For their house.
Exactly, yeah. And, and in Section Thirty-Six, the average lot size is eleven acres, and there's a wildlife area combining zone, so again, they don't have the, they don't have a hundred and sixty acres, and it's already parceled. So, what we're trying to honor with Section Thirty-Six is, again, that's a, that was conveyed through warranty deeds and sales contracts decades ago. We want to recognize that it's, it's like Hayner Park, it was conveyed, there's multiple ownerships, you're not allowed to divide today, you shouldn't be allowed to tomorrow, but these uses are, are entirely residential, there's been no history of commercial forestry, and, and so that's what we're trying to honor with Section Thirty-Six and Hayner Park and Skyline Subdivision and the three other locations, is to recognize that these are residential properties that we'll call it, that are zoned incorrectly, we want to rectify that, to allow these residential uses and their accessory uses to be permitted outright.
Is there any way to have a conversation with somebody at the highest level in the state of Oregon to kind of find the common ground here? And I'm thinking, remember, you and I went to lunch with Jason Minor years ago, just, and he was, had a thousand friends at that point, just, you know, I mean, it, it ends up being conflict, but there's goals that we're trying to get to.
We can, and that's, that's a good question, and we've been involving DLCD in all of our notices and our input, et cetera, and I don't recall that DLCD actually raised any concerns about kind of the Goal One policies in their initial testimony. In fact, if anything, they suggested they might be even more restrictive than we proposed, and that's-
More restrict, what's that mean, more restrictive?
For example, what, what we proposed was, we, we proposed basically what's in state law today to require, to allow somebody to rezone their property from farm or forest to a non-resource lands. We then looked at a couple of other policies that we proposed, wildlife that's more restrictive. But what DLCD recommended was, for example, the Big Look Bill also had other carrying capacity standards that could be evaluated when somebody proposes to change their zoning. So, for example, we could even become, we could even be more restrictive than what we've currently proposed right here. So, that would be a conversation to have with One Thousand Friends of Oregon or Central Oregon Land Watch or others, to see if those are applicable. But DLCD, they didn't raise the, the concerns necessarily with the general policies for the NPR twenty, the Goal One policies, as much as they raised some concerns with the Goal Two policies. So, we could, and, and getting back to the Planning Commission's request, is they would like more time to, to really evaluate the Goal One policies, the policy framework that applies to both, and primarily the NPR twenty. They'd like some more time to look at those, and they would like to, a process to look at those, and they haven't defined what that process may be, but it very well could be, let's have a conversation with One Thousand Friends or DLCD or, or others, but they haven't said that.
So, I guess to me, I, I think you're on a good point here, because we see that the things that work out are, are somewhat negotiated, they are, you know, even when the one MUA was, or the one EFU was changed, that now is the pilot project for Bend, there was already a workout between, but that property owner and allowing the cluster, so it came to us as a done deal, in a way, but it wasn't now, but those are individual developers, and that's the truth of Westside Transsec, that's true with resort development expansions, but now what we're trying to say is that, I guess part of my feeling is that it's really a burden on a lot of property owners to do that whole thing. When you have wealthy developers, which is what we've had, work out these deals, it's one thing, but they could do the soil study and everything if they, I mean, they're, they're doing another option to do it, so now who does it for everybody else? Because it's really, and so we're now in that role, but, but the question is, who, who meets, I mean, it doesn't really make sense for the Planning Commission to meet with those entities, because they're, they're coming up to us, and you can meet with them and inform us, but I guess that's kind of what I'm, you know, you're kind of drawing on, what you're saying, is who, who does the, you know, discussions? Because we're, we, it was interesting, I watched a little bit of the Planning Commission meeting, not all of it, and I could see that the, yeah, like you're saying, the battle lines were drawn, and I'm not really sure till it gets to us what the battle lines are, if it's just, well, we've, you're, you've, you're halfway dense in all these communities, that's good for us, or if it's some other fundamental arguments, or what it is, or on that, on the-
And the Planning Commission is definitely, you know, scrutinizing it and thinking about it, putting a lot of time into really-
Yeah.
Thinking of the future consequences, you know, there's a lot of value there, but, yeah, if there's just these hard stops, a few steps ahead, it's a hard one.
Work with that.
So, I support keeping the package together, getting it a little bit more mature, I think, and that's the request right now. It'd be nice to be able to say, these committed areas, let's proceed, but it, it's not, that's the second step. We need to get to the first step, which is the one that's at a bump in the road, and the Planning Commission's specifically asking, can we further review?
Yeah, I think they were respectfully asking for a little more time.
Yeah.
They're mindful that this is a process that's been discussed with the Board for years, it's a work, it's a work program, a work project that started last year, it's of course carrying over to this new fiscal year, and they didn't, they just, I think, sincerely wanted to make sure that the, this Board was comfortable with them spending, I don't think it's going to be a significant number of meetings, but just an opportunity to devote deliberation or two, to really fleshing out the eligibility criteria and sharing their perspectives with you versus, you know, if this Board was really interested in the criteria that staff introduced, you could share that with us, and we would convey it to them, and they would know, okay, well, understood, we'll, we'll, we'll stay in our lane, so to, so to speak. But they just wanted to, I think sincerely, kind of vet it out, given the, you know, the, the two public hearings that were held, one in May and one in June.
And I think, just high level now, you know, the philosophy of resisting urban growth expansion and, and requiring density is what we're talking about here, and it just doesn't seem to jive with people's vision of having a little, not everybody's vision, of having a little bit elbow room, being able to find that next parcel of land, being able to, you know, either build in retirement or the rural residential parcel. I mean, people want that, and it's just a direct stop sometimes with how, how much resistance there is for the UGB or rural development.
So, yeah, I think, I think what you're saying is right. I mean, it's kind of the, the trend that the city is, and the state are pushing are really counter to what many of us want to do, and many, and the history of Dishoe County has been, but lots of people want to, I mean, it's amazing how many people I talk to that-
When I'm involved with the Council of Aging, I don't mind living in a forestory high-rise with medical downstairs and a-
Right.
You know, food a couple blocks away, I don't mind that, but not right now.
But, yeah, a lot of people want, want more room. What, so I guess if you're asking, if the, I think the Planning Commission, my view would be, yeah, they could, we could spend some more time thinking about it. I wonder, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned with your comment about DLCD. I was, you know, we were going to go last week to the LCD's meeting, and I looked at the, and I didn't go, but I have a different strategy for maybe a few, further meeting to talk about this. But looking at their agenda, they're actually looking at taking non-prime, or what they call rural lands, off their work plan for the next two years. It was on the agenda in Condon, and I think they vote on it the next meeting, but they're actually going the other way about this, whereas we're talking about it with, and I know other counties are talking about the need for it to be on the agenda, they're actually looking at deleting it. So, with that impact, are moving forward on any of this, or does that just mean they're not going to have leadership at their level?
Mr. Chairman, that's a good question, and I hadn't heard what the nature of their discussion was last week in Condon, but I would suggest, given my understanding of our Board's direction for the past decade, is if they're going to take it off our agenda, it's all the more reason for us to address it, because it's just postponing their rulemaking. And I understand they have to implement House Bill Two Thousand One and all these other things the legislature just gave them, but if they're thinking about taking this off, it's going to leave us in that limbo for additional years.
Well, and I, I'm not sure, I mean, one of the things I want to do is, in the, maybe in the next meeting, address that, you know, with them as a Commissioner in one county, maybe I can get other Commissioners to also say three minutes worth of thing, but it seemed to me what, the report that they had done from the state, from Portland State, from that fellow, that, she had a fellowship or something in Portland State, was looking at rural, they call them rural something lands, as opposed to non-prime resource, but, but that study kind of, I didn't read the whole thing, I read a lot of it, and it seemed like it went off on the tangent more of, well, we've got to look at this for habitat, water issues, all these other things that have nothing to do with people, they're non-people issues, other than they're kind of environment issues, and it looked complicated, but it really didn't have anything to do with how, when you studied it, it wasn't really about housing as a possi, you know, or other uses, it was just, and maybe that's why they got up, they said, well, we're not going to go into that, because it's not, I don't know, it isn't what we're, we're talking about here, but, so you think, but anyway, in terms of this, this matter, you think that's a reason to go forward, okay?
I support-
So, are we meeting with Catherine Morrow then? When I was, I was studying the Board and I noticed three people- When I was, I was studying the board and I noticed three people were from Portland and the only person that was decided the mountain was from Bend. So I know there was something about that.
She expressed a willingness, commissioners, to meet with you. I was going to actually bring it up later on under other items, whether you wanted to do it together or individually and when?
And Ms. Morrow has been debriefed on this issue. Yeah, so she's well aware of the six committed residential areas and DLCD's testimony that they provided in May, you know, essentially 24 hours before the first hearing. So she's well versed and of course has a robust understanding of Deschutes County.
If, so are you in favor of allowing the Planning Commission to work longer on this?
Yes, I am, but I'd like, I'd also like to meet with, because you're always saying we have to do our strategy. So I think meeting with her is an excellent idea.
Okay, well, it sounds like you have guidance there on that. And maybe they could talk about some of these other criteria. DLCD had some of, I'm not quite sure what that, you mean, but we've, we've got to get finished for today. So when's their next Planning Commission meeting?
They meet again next week on August 8th. They have a full agenda already with floodplain public hearing, the Arlopa public hearing, and then deliberations on the Terrebonne refinement plan. So we've indicated to the Planning Commission that if the board supports allowing them some more time to review these standards, that we would take that back to them on August 22nd.
Are we in favor of that?
Yes.
It sounds like we are, so that'd be good.
They'll be very pleased with you, no, I think.
Since you're here, how did the hearing go in Terrebonne last Thursday? Was it a big turnout or?
Yes, it was. It was, it was a solid turnout. We, we estimated approximately 60 people or so attended. I think about 16 testified, provided comments formally on the record, and I'll explain what that means in just a moment. Probably a dozen or so opposed the current, the, the current refinement plan proposal with the couplet, expressing concerns and issues and whatnot. And they didn't necessarily say they, well, they didn't say that they supported the five lane or any other option. They just had concerns about the current proposal. And about four explained that, that it's, it's not perfect, but something needs to happen. And they, they, they do support the couplet proposal. Our chairman Crawford, I thought, did, did a fantastic job of really allowing a lot of informal questions from the attendees to both our senior transportation planner, Peter Russell, to ODOT and to the consultant. And there was a really good dialogue that occurred at a couple of different times throughout the hearing to help people really understand what the proposal is, what the key issues are, the history, options going forward. So it was, I think it was a very, very positive hearing overall, very, very respectful, everybody that participated. So it was, I think it was a very good hearing.
But 12 of the 16 opposed?
Yeah, about, that's, that's more people testified in opposition than in support, for sure.
When I drove through Terrebonne and then Madras on Friday and coming back Saturday, I was thinking about, you know, how they split Madras.
The couplet?
And I was wondering back historically, was Madras really upset? I mean, it always wasn't split, was it? Didn't that happen at some point in time?
A few years ago.
Yeah, just within the last, I think, five years, right? Five or seven?
I would just like to hear the history on that because I'm getting the calls from Pennsylvania from someone who, you know, knows everybody in Terrebonne. And she just says that so many people aren't really opposed.
I, I would add-
I was just going to say that that, that specific question was asked and answered during the public hearing about the history of Madras and how that came about. And so it was great. And both ODOT and the consultant were able to respond to that question. And so we'll make sure that they're aware that that question will be asked by the board again so they can address it to you, because that's a great question.
I was just going to add, I think there was a third, if you could put them in three buckets. The third bucket was, so there were some that were, I would call it maybe the pragmatist, like imperfect solution, but $20 million, you know, strike by the iron's hot. There were certainly the, the residents that were opposed. And then there was a third category of those that owned, owned businesses. And they were really concerned about the operational effect of the couplet. And, you know, what the implications are of a bike lane or on-street parking and just how the, the impacts of that design, you know, in different areas of, of the Terrebonne refinement area, what that could do to access to vehicle traffic leaving their business. So it might have been, you could fall under the camp of, of opposition, but I think it was really just, if you wanted to hone it down, it was even more so to how it would have directly affect their business operations.
The unintended consequences.
Yeah, yeah, or being mindful of what that design would mean and can it get mitigated? So those are, those certainly would be poignant questions to ask ODOT when you have your hearing as well.
But, yeah, it actually surprised me there was only 60 people and only that many testifying. So that really is less than's been at a lot of the community meetings, I mean, of the ones I've gone to.
They already think it's a done deal, is what I'm hearing from my people, that they, they think it's hopeless, that, you know, no one's going to really listen to them anymore is what I've heard from other people that I've talked to, so.
I think they were very appreciative it was held in Terrebonne.
A lot of them, they all have been down there, oh, you know. But no, you mean with our-
I'm sorry, just the Planning Commission's hearing was, I mean, it was obviously very convenient.
Yes, it's what, where it should be.
But in terms of us having our commission hearing there, I, I wonder if we'd have less or more people or? I mean, there's, the meetings I've gone to is, you know, they started out at 200 and more of people and there were a lot more people than had opinions and, so I don't know, I've, I'm going to turn the, okay, thanks. I think we're done with this, the non-prime resource land. Last, last action item is the potential appeal. I've got to go to another meeting, so I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Dair to run that. I'm in favor of hearing that.
Okay.
Two cents. So that's fine. Sorry, nothing personal, I just have another meeting I need to get to.
Well, we got your opinion, so that's good.
Yeah, good, thanks. And are we going to reconvene at one then?
Yeah, sure.
Is, yes, Phil will be here?
That's the plan.
At 1:00? Okay. Are you ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Good after, almost just a few minutes to good afternoon, commissioners. This is Cynthia Smith with the County Planning Division. And before the board is a potential appeal for an administrative decision approving a modification of a marijuana production facility. It has been standard practice and policy to provide the board an opportunity to call these up if it's appealed, anything related to marijuana land use permits. In this case, we have a modification of a previously approved marijuana production facility. It's on Tumalo Road, 20400 Tumalo Road. The applicant is David Commons. He was originally approved to go from medical to recreational marijuana. What they're wanting to do is just change their water supply. So they were exclusively Central Oregon Irrigation District water and they want to now go to primarily water hauling. And then there's some water reclamation in there. So they've provided a rundown of what their plan is. They're going to, delivery once a month, they have an 850 gallon storage tank and they're going to be working with water, Bend water hauling. So there were, there are no other changes. Everything fits within the original approval. There were no comments submitted, so I don't, I don't believe there'll be, or an appeal is unlikely. Today is the last day.
Today, at 5:00?
Yep, at 5:00 today, exactly. So I've provided an order 2019-032. If you want to have the ability to hear this if it is appealed today.
So it's just, the applicant does not want to use irrigation water for its cannabis production?
Yeah, exclusively.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the why, but maybe that's-
Yeah, I think it was just maybe a change of circumstances. They may be wanting to use that irrigation in another part of the property. They do have about 11 acres of water rights. It's a 12-acre property. Oh, and they're limited to that irrigation season. And that could play a part in it as well.
Yeah, if appealed, I'd support hearing it.
And I would also.
There you go.
Do we need to vote?
Yes.
So I'll move approval of order number 2019-032, I think, is what we're looking at.
And may I second it? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Yes.
Here you go.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Cynthia.
So we'll reconvene upstairs at 1:00?
1:00, we will reconvene. Thank you very much.